All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 12, 2015 Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. Thank you for public access for taping us tonight and Mr. Fran Aldrich, we appreciate you being here. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment and introduce our new school committee member from Clinton, Mr. Jason Brager. Welcome over.
Thank you very much.
And we are going to begin tonight's meeting with a 2016-2016 budget discussion. I would like to remind everyone that we are a meeting held in public and not a public meeting and ask you all to remain quiet and wait until the person presiding over the meeting, whether it be myself or our treasurer, Mr. Chase, before you make any comments, please.
We should remind everybody by law at 7 o'clock, whatever we're doing, we have to cease for the official public hearing and it's scheduled, John, for 7?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. We have to do that by law. Participation should be broadly and then broadly resumed where we were because probably we should continue from there. But we do that. So if we stop at 7, we have to do that because we posted that open hearing for 7.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I am going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Chase as a treasurer of Silver Lake who runs the budget discussion.
Thank you, Chair. At this point, I'd open up the committee members if one is speaking, I guess, in whole or whatever. But if you do some or doesn't. Anyone has any opinions over what we're doing or not doing for this year?
Mr. Acting Treasurer Chair, the money for the budget, I was not here last month. I would rather have been going through what I did in the afternoon. Just so I can know on the budget, I know that there's one position for a math teacher at the middle school, I believe, John, am I wrong? Interject?
No, you're accurate.
And there's a couple of part-time coaches?
Your two coaching positions.
Which are basically part-time. I mean, not full-time.
No, they are side-handed positions.
We're not talking big money, Mr. ...
$3,400 is the two coaching positions.
Thank you. So I have no problem putting those in. I do have problems as I have in the past. I will not support curriculum coordinators. I will not support the computers because I think down the road you're going to need technicians. Also, I'm looking at some of the salaries. We're getting people that are in the six-figure category. I'm looking at the library situation where the salary is between $85,000 and $88,000. I want to see if we can combine that, but that's what I'm looking at, so I'll give you my comment.
Thank you, Chair. We're not in the committee or seeking a budget as?
I have some questions.
Yes.
I'd like an explanation of a few different line items, so if you want me to just read them off like that or what do you? Tell me how you want to go.
That's fine. Again, me personally, I like to go page by page. The committee hasn't been taking that over the past couple of years, so if people want to pull things out, specific line items, we just go with that line and discuss that line. That's fine with me.
It's your meeting.
You have the floor, so what would you like to discuss?
Okay. I'd like an explanation of the textbooks purchases that were, and I'm not sure which are going on the cover page here.
Sure.
The hardware and the software. Audiovisual. And acquisition of equipment and replacement of equipment and psychological service under specialized education.
Sure. In your package tonight, there are those on the textbooks, constructional, hardware and software, and equipment that children detail listed in each one of those. They're on who page? They're just behind the hot pin.
Okay. All right, so the middle school, the textbooks were requesting $4,300 and it's $850 for replacements. Rebinding and repairing is $550. Math record and practice journal is $500.
Correct.
ELA teacher resources is $400 and ELA student subscriptions to reader is $2,000.
Correct.
And I have an explanation of what the student subscriptions are?
I'm sure that Mr. Dupill will be able to help to give you that explanation.
Sure. Absolutely. So the subscriptions are, if you think of it like an e-reader, so what the classes are able to do is have all the three ELA for each grade access the same material at the same time. It also helps with our DDMs, which is our district measurement, because then we can do a writing prompt that all the kids are at the same place at the same time without actually buying textbooks so that they're all there at the same time. So it's a much cheaper way of doing that.
Is another way of looking at, to call it site license?
Yes. Yep.
And the replacements are just some worn-out books?
Yeah, so every year we have some rebinds after student use as the books get older so that we send them out and they can, they refurbish the book and allow us to continue to use it.
And at the high school, we have replacements for $11,725. Are we replacing a series or?
No, replacements would be across the board on all subjects with the same reasons that Mr. Dupill gave with rebinds and replacement of text.
And then we have some new textbooks also at the high school?
Yep.
And is that replacing?
Some new texts going along with our advanced placement curriculum in biology. And if you remember, we talked about the U.S. history course last year that we would need to revisit this year. We didn't purchase those last year, but we need to revisit this year for to keep up to date with the advanced placement curriculum through the College Board for changes. The other new text in our foreign language area, we've got text that is needed. That needs to be updated. We will look in the area of Spanish really for the new language books. We do also need them in French as well, but we were trying to tier that. All that text in all the languages are dated. New English texts we have are currently the books that we read at the 10th grade level. The 10th grade book, we feel as though since the curriculum has been changing statewide that that text is more appropriate for an eighth grade reading level at this point and we would like to upgrade. Will be utilized with our sophomores for the English text. The special education reading materials is just an update to our reading programs that we have or supplementary programs. Yeah, and I mentioned this, we need to get a text series for the new child program that we put into CTE.
All right, let's talk about the hardware and software. Is any of this software new? Or is it all existing?
I don't know if Jim can answer that right away. We had originally talked about having Steve Pell come to our meeting, but because the last project meeting was canceled and this one is so abbreviated, Steve is probably the best person to answer many of those questions, but you may remember which of these are new. Google Vault, I'm trying to go down the side and go down this list. Google Vault is something that is a new name for product that we've been doing for all along. It's the archiving software that we use to keep our emails. We're required to keep emails for seven years. Study Island has been used in the middle school for some time, as I remember it. SAMP is used for some time. That is a program that nurses use for inputting data. It actually starts at the elementary level and we carry it all the way through. Carbonite is some backup software that we use. Arrow Hive and Half Little While. Arrow Hive is a license that we use for wireless access system in the school and the school across the street and it is something we've had for some time. The Microsoft licensing arrangement, this is the second or third year of that arrangement. It gives us access to all Microsoft products and upgrades and has been in the budget before. Comcast internet access is something that we talked about at lunch last year and a continuation of that product. Power School is our student information system. We've had it for very long time. Blackboard Engage and Blackboard Connect, those are the products that we have had for a while. Those are the systems that allow me to send you those messages at 6 o'clock at night and the emails as well are used extensively by the schools. Altaris is a product that we have had for a while that's used by our tech staff to be able to image our computers and also be able to provide remote support. Smart PD is something that is, this is the second or third year for it, I can't remember. It is a cooperative product we use with other districts throughout what's roughly called the lighthouse area. It is how we register teachers who are enrolled in professional development. It keeps track of it. It issues their certificates. It also allows, it's an online product. It also allows us to share courses with other districts and for our teachers to share courses with their districts. Frankly makes us more efficient rather than having a seat go begging if there was somebody who lived in another, from another district who was close by, we would have taken advantage and yes, we would charge tuition to the sending district. Teach Point has been with us for a while. That is how we deal with the evaluation system. First model is a special education product. It's been with us for some time. It is a reading program. It turns text into sound. Moving down, Edwin Teaching and Learning is, could be new next, could be new next year. It is a service that is available from the state and Mr. Dupill can give you a better sense of how it would be used at the middle school, so it will use at the high school.
So Edwin Teaching and Learning is a program that is promoting, thrust through not only to better evaluate our data but also look at our curriculum within the school. So it's something that we're looking at certainly as we're looking at our data points as we're trying to improve our curriculum instruction. And this is the software that recently the state released and allowed some districts to use for free to try some things out this year. And they're trying to improve that again to give us more feedback and allow us to continue to move our schools forward. And that's really the basis premise of the Edwin.
SOFO is our, thank you, SOFO is the product we use for filtering. We require to filter content that comes in on the internet. And I say this every now and again, we have pretty heavily filtered online presence. So emails that people send to me sometimes get sent to spam and get shredded. Before I receive them, I apologize. Please give me a call. It sometimes goes to electoral legislative cabinet, as it should, given the population of students. There are federal requirements. Pick-a-Time is an online program that allows, just as I suggested, Pick-a-Time for people who have, for instance, wanted to set up parent nights instead of conferences. It's done online. People don't have to do it online, but it certainly seems to work very well. Smart Music, I honestly don't remember what that was, Jim.
That's new.
It's a middle school product.
It is. The Smart Music is what our music teachers currently use and it's been there for a year and a half now. And they use this because it is able to let a student play music and identify the notes that they hit right or that they missed. So they use it as an assessment software and they can also use it as for student practice at home. And obviously it moves students forward in the band and also, I mean, really for our band classes and our band students. And it's very successful. In fact, they've now incorporated it as part of their district term measure because it's an easy evaluation to show progress that our students are making in our music programs at the middle school.
Job Log is something that would be new next year. It's being used as part of the science curriculum. It is an online product that is used both in the classroom and used out of the classroom as a way of challenging students in various science topics, like frameworks. And it will evaluate what it is that you know and sort of move you along to the difficulty and the questions and come back and repeat certain topics that in fact you seem to be struggling with. It doesn't replace the teacher, doesn't replace textbooks, it's certainly a valuable tool. So now we come to the one that has a name that I can't even say because I've tried a couple of times. And I don't remember what it does. So Jim or Jim?
You know, I've had the conversation, are you both FOT?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it right.
That's probably correct.
And I think it's a, I think it's a backup system, to be honest with you, a backup software.
So as Christine goes through the detail, we'll try to get back on that, okay? Probably the way I think people remember it is that's a creative program that's been in high school for a number of years. It is a licensing agreement that we have with the project, Interway Folks. Fat Pipe is in fact what we use to bundle the, it sounds interesting when it is. It's a product we use to bundle and balance load between the buildings, the efficiency out of the internet. Impact, reduction software is how we test our stu-, I was going to say our student athletes, starting with student athletes. It's now we're doing it by class as they come in. And in fact, part of a state department. PE health software that's been around for a while, is what we're using in our health programs. Interactive health technologies.
That is a new one for the high school and it's used in the wellness program?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly what it does. It goes along with the fitness heart monitor. So what he said, that is a possibility for our students? So this is part of an initiative we're doing. The school, we relate to the rest of the court, I don't necessarily remember. Shows a benefit. Ooh, there's kind of something, I fully know what it is. Server one, we have a number of services and maintenance services, if you will. We have a number of iPads that are used for the most part for special education, but not only. There's some upgrades, some additional software upgrades coming along. We have had them for some time. All Day for Suki E, I believe, is the new competency tracking software.
Train Works is the new competency.
Oh, Train Works is.
So all that is better than what we have?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, please speak up.
All that is a diagnostic program utilized in our ongoing.
What are your programs?
Career Person is probably used by guidance. Train Work is competency, is a factor of how students are doing. As we've gone through, we've included most of the items that we talked about, the products that we've talked about for a while and a couple of items that we stumbled and worked models of and ones that we've handled and for providing reasons included.
And I found the information on the FOT.
Thank you.
What is the security certificate that's used within power school? What passwords are changed?
Part of, and upgrade for privacy for students' records and parents getting in and out. More and more of this is open to outside remote access by accounts. I think we all have heard about some pretty fabulous data breaches that have happened to companies and we're not looking to be on the news, so that's what that is. If you flip the page and go over to hardware. If you flip the page and go over to hardware, these are requests that are being brought forward. Force switch replacements. Again, Steve will do a much better job and I've invited him to do it next month.
Our next meeting?
Our next meeting. Yeah. February 26. February 26 meeting, I'm sorry, our next meeting. That is a replacement, we certainly talked about replacing some of the switches that were original to the building when they were put in 10 years ago. These are the more expensive switches that were put in when we built the building 10 years ago. It seems to me that in order of magnitude, we are now looking at buying switches that will do what the other ones did and maybe more for about half the price we paid for the buildings. It is something that we're looking at a replacement meantime to figure and then. Access points or increasing the number of access points in the buildings. Replacement computers at our middle school, $12,000. Backup array is dealing with the backup of our daydream building. We are starting to talk about replacing printers. As you see, a request for both buildings for printers. We have a request for the replacement of computers in the language lab. We're not 10 years old. They are, the biggest issue we are having with our language lab is that the product that we are using is no longer supported as I remember because it was designed for a different generation of computers that are no longer available. I mean, that's, that's the issue we have with there. As so far, what we've talked about really for the most part are replacements of existing product that we have. We really haven't talked about adding items at this point. But we do get to Chromebooks, $19,700. That is a continuation of the one-on-one initiative. That would be to give the freshman class a Chromebook and the existing freshmen take theirs with them up to sophomores. Upgrades is just really what it says. It's an enablement to do some work on some of the machines that we have and upgrade them to work with newer, different software. And there is a request for a Cow, computer on wheels for fine practical arts. They currently have computers that they are using with desktop units that they have. They are at the end of their useful life. They have been in a harsh environment. We are looking to go from desktop units and actually use the space differently to portable computers, computer on wheels. They would be used by, primarily by. Tech education. Tech education, yeah, tech education, the way people, but it would be shared among more people because it would not be fixed in a space that Mr. Schriefer is using right now wherein one side is a design area using computers, the other side is a little workshop where they work on models. So that's a quick overview in the industry. Mr. Pell will do a much better job of explaining it all. But again, there is very few new items. There are certainly some and I think we try to identify them. But new question.
Okay, and the acquisition of equipment?
So I will try my best. I'm sure Jim, Jim will jump in if I. Pause way too long, or if I get it wrong, it's a little bit dark. At the middle school, the first two items, treadmill and elliptical trainers. We have a, as part of our new program, the Williams program, we have gym equipment. The items that are there were original to the building. We're looking to replace some of them because they are becoming problematic. The mix of what we will get as replacements is somewhat different. It's based upon how things are done today. Elliptical trainers, I think, one of the elliptical trainers would be substituted for a treadmill when it's died. Heart rate monitor, that's part of a wellness initiative. We never perform without a software program. So this is the equipment that goes with the software. High school, Vex kits, it is in Tech Ed. It is, if you will, a prepackaged set of experiments, materials, lesson plans, all put together in an easy-to-use kit that is refillable as time goes on. I'm sure, I'm sure that the Tech Ed teacher would be horrified at that explanation. The Vex kits are the replacements for basically the old auto cab. It's an addition to it. We upgraded those. We bought, last year, we purchased the other half. This is the second half of what we need to complete the set. We would still keep the old programs. They're still useful in our, you get our Project Leadaway classes, but these are more advanced to further along their programs. So this is the second half of that purchase. And the air filtration and dust collection system is also for our Project Leadway area, Mr. Schriefer has asked as we move towards that shop becoming more of a makerspace and a bigger area for students to utilize as a shop, so to speak. That goes along with the, if we backed up to the cows for that area, it would save those computers that are in there at the end of their line with all the dust and everything that's utilized in there. So everything that comes together with this makes that more of a makerspace shop for our Tech Ed. Additional replacement equipment, middle school, a couple of copiers for, copiers that are currently there. A laminator, or a laminator that's there, treadmill, one on one swap for what we have. Some fitness equipment, which are dumbbells, you and I might actually recognize right away. I expect to see it. The high school, under CTE, we're looking for two mortise machines to be used in the woodworking shop. We currently have a couple of machines in my, we'll leave this. We have two mortise machines in our copper piece shop. They're over 40 years old. They don't make the parts anything to fix them. They're used daily and they need to be replaced. And then two items that are not inexpensive. We're talking about the replacement of an existing corrodible mower and replacement of a truck with a block. And after the last couple, I'm not sure we can have enough blocks.
I'm sorry, did you say the truck was an replacement as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not, we're not adding to the fleet. I think the truck we're talking about replacing is 17 years old now. Not exactly positive, but it's about 17 years old. And use for block. Use for block.
And the mower?
Mower is, mower is a production machine for us. We have 25 acres of fields that we mow on a regular basis. We are looking to replace an existing mower with another mower. It is an issue of energy and time. They're low on ink paint, but if it fails, we have a serious problem in the sense that now we're moving out of the field.
Oh, sorry, John. Just a quick question on the mower and the truck. Weren't these in our budget last year and we took them out because we didn't feel that we could afford them at that time?
You have seen these before as items that we know are coming up and will need to be replaced. There always has been, if you will, some flexibility in some of these items when time is right to do them. The other thing is that the capital plan that we talked about in November had these as future needs. So they're listed here as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Just psychological services.
Psychological services. It pays for a certain level of therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy that we're required to provide for some of our spent students. It also deals with the cost of testing that we might have if we can't do it in-house or if we need to buy a particular test or diagnostic. You see a large increase there, not because the demand has gone up, but because the grants have gone away. We have a grant, it's called a 240 grant, it's a formula grant. Lots of, every school in the state gets it. And it is just, costs have continued to go up, the grants in some cases, in this case have actually, the allowances have gone down. And so we need to find a way to fund those services, the services we need to.
Do you want to talk about, is anything else on this list also on our future needs, capital?
I would have to look, but I do not believe so. The capital list that we put together dealt more, did deal with maintenance items and that kind of equipment is of course teaching supplies returns. So copiers and treadmills and gym was not, was not a real issue. A few years ago, we laid out the replacement cycle for touchsticks. Certainly, teaching equipment is something that we need to lay down as well. We have yet a second, we have yet a third list of items, and that was the five-year technology plan, which has since been updated since you saw it last time. One more year into it.
So I do have a quick question. The, the blue detail sheets. I could find everything that was in the draft that we got last month except the hardware page. Is that, am I not putting you in the right spot?
Do you want to start listing the budget?
I couldn't, I can find the other numbers right on the back of it. Right. Yeah, it says hardware. The total in front of that page.
The total in front is hardware and software. So includes everything that's on that. You go to cover the front of the first sheet with the software.
Right, that includes both sides.
That in real total includes both sides.
Okay, thank you. That's where I'll see it. Anybody else have anything that you'd like to say? Either the principals want to speak to the budget at all, or what we're trying to do next year or not? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I mean, we're here. Say anything or not, you're welcome.
Well, they're, they're requests based on, you know, what we feel is needed to push education forward with our kids at the high school. Obviously, it's a discussion that we need to have, items that we feel are important. So that's why we bring them to the table.
So we're going to have Mr. Powell in the next meeting to go a little bit further into the technology items and any questions that we might have on that. And this needs to be voted in March for the, for the proposed Kingston Town Meeting, is that correct?
Well, we could probably ask, but Kingston budgetary things have been postponed to June 6th or something. So we might ask them if they have a date, but June 6th, I think, is when, of course, you had, we're going to do the budget part of our town meeting.
Okay, great.
And the chair lady just shook her head, so that's the right thing.
And if I may say, from my perspective, I think it's welcome news because there's always two parts of this. There's the budget and then there's the assessment part. The assessment part is based entirely on revenue. A third of our revenue comes from state revenue. The cause of the change in administration. We normally know what that's going to be at the end of June.
January?
End of January, I think. I have June on my mind for some reason. End of January, but I think as soon as the date went fully, we're going to see a state budget and those numbers would become all important. All important because it is how much revenue we get. All important because that minimum contribution number is, really drives the assessment funding for our member towns.
Mr. Shays, the date the governor was supposed to come out with was February the 24th. But because of the special budget, the supplementary budget and the weather conditions, it will be March 4th. And the chair, I believe the chair gave a commitment to three speakers to begin at 6:45. So I would honor the chair to introduce, she said.
Or turn the meeting back over to the chair, thank you.
All right, I've had a request from the Kingston, the Halifax and the Kingston Finance Committees to officially be put on the agenda. So to one of those requests, Kingston Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. Whoever would like to speak first? Do you mind if I go right ahead?
Thank you. John didn't even recognize me the other night, so I won't take offense.
I didn't either, so.
Sometimes you just got to do what you got to do. Good evening. I just didn't want to speak with my back to anybody, so I chose to come up here. Plus, I have poor eyesight, so I need to follow my notes. But thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mary McKinnon and I am here on behalf of the Kingston Finance Committee. On, as most of you know, or all of you may know, on Thursday, February 5th, the Tri-Town Finance Committees and Boards of Selectmen had convened for some discussions regarding, among other things, related to Silver Lake, their FY15 and FY16 budgets. I, for one, felt that we had an open and spirited dialogue, which I felt was great. I know that other folks will be speaking after me and touching upon some other issues from that meeting, so I will focus my comments strictly on the FY16 budget cycle. We all have a vested interest in building a budget that provides a quality education and is sustainable for all three communities. In Kingston, we have over sixty budgets in town, Silver Lake being one of them. We all work very hard to protect core services for our residents, and that includes education. In an ideal world, there would be unlimited resources and preparing a budget would be easy. Since none of us won Powerball the other night, we're here tonight to talk about the work we have to do to prepare a budget. There are economic realities at the local level that we must all face. There is no shortage of demand for our resources, yet there exists a very limited supply. At the end of the day, we are all accountable to the residents of our communities and accountable for how we allocate the limited resources that we have. So in terms of the FY16 budget, for Kingston, we have not finished meeting with all of our town departments, but we have had an opportunity to project a current financial picture. I'll be honest with you, we've had over $3 million worth of requests for all sorts of increases. One-time expenditures, capital expenditures and operating increases. Our ability to fund those increases is limited. The revenue capacity that we have includes using excess levy from last year, taxing to the full two and a half percent and including a moderate new growth increase. As is the case every year that we face, like you guys face, there are fixed costs that we are obligated to fund. For us, some of the bigger fixed costs that we have are pension, $133,000. Health insurance increase, $155,000. Property and casualty insurance, $67,000. Contract negotiations, about $240,000. Our local schools have submitted a budget with an increase of $610,000. And given that we don't have an assessment number for Silver Lake, we've worked on projecting one. And based on our projections, we're currently carrying an estimated increase of $723,000 on our Silver Lake assessment. Based on the available revenues and that picture that I've just painted on you, Kingston has a structural deficit of over $600,000. Unless we can come up with some significant cuts, the impact to our taxpayers will be felt. Last year, our residents are an average increase of two and a half percent or $136. Next year, based on this budget, using that excess capacity, taxing to the full two and a half percent, our residents are going to see an increase of approximately four and a half percent or $250. But in addition to all of that, we are currently facing an $800,000 project at our elementary school to replace the heating system. We're investigating handling that as a capital exclusion item, which would be a one-time addition to our taxpayers of an additional $65. That brings the total to an increase of over $300 for our residents. And we need to do better than that for our residents. So I've painted the picture for you to let you know that we have some challenges ahead. I'm sure that we can work together to figure out about a budget that is affordable and sustainable, and we're asking for your help to achieve that. Thank you.
I'll stay here for the sake of time. To follow up basically on what Mary said, I would talk, bring up what happened at the last meeting on January 8th. The Boards of Selectmen and Finance Committees were here. And I can be honest with you, when I left that meeting, I had no idea the 2014-15 budget had been increased. The discussions that night were based on 2016 budgets. I left not knowing this year's budget increase. I'm not going to talk about the items that increased because that's not my focus. The focus is the process. There was a meeting, I didn't understand it, and a few other people I know did not understand what had occurred at that meeting. So we were surprised when we got a letter in the mail, got a letter stating that the 2014-15 budget increased $600,000 for whatever. Again, the items don't matter. It's the process. Then to find out that either, we had two choices, do nothing, which means we've made no comment on this expenditure, or hold a special town meeting to let our residents decide if these were expenses should be incurred. All expenses in the town, in town of Kingston, I'll only speak to it. All go to town meeting, whether we're using our free cash, when money is spent, it's done through a town meeting vote. Kingston Board of Selectmen discussed it. Because of the expense involved, the vote did not go to hold a special town meeting. That did not mean that the Kingston Board of Selectmen were satisfied with the process. During the meeting, we did discuss the members who were here that night that we did not understand. So basically, what I'm asking is, we've always worked together in the past. A lot of times, we don't agree with each other, but at the end of the day, we always seem to come together and at least respect each other's opinions and involve each other in what's going on. We do come to your meetings as often as we can and as frequently as we can, so we can be up to date. I just want to say that in the future, please, we're not your enemies. We're, like Mary said, we want to give the students the best education we can, but we have to add the caveat on what we can afford. And we have a whole town of other issues that we need to fund as well. So it's just putting things into perspective, working together, and we'll get through it like we have every other year. Just, please, just educate us a little bit more so we can be more productive in the conversations. Thank you.
How long has my answer been?
Good evening, everyone. I just have, I'm sorry, I don't have copies of the slides for everyone, but I'm trying to share. So this is the Halifax.
Thanks.
This is the first page. If you could email them, that'd be great.
Okay.
Everyone.
Just let me grab my copy. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Gordon Andrews. I'm the Chair of the Halifax Finance Committee. So to quickly go over the slides that I painted up tonight. What the, what the slides show you is what the ability for Halifax has to increase spending. So I've got one sheet for myself. So on the front page of that, that sheet, it shows, yeah, can I just steal that real quick? So on the front page of the sheet, we have an operating revenue of available increases. So we have a prop two and a half increase of approximately $346,750. We have an updated estimated new growth number of $134,783. We have an excess capacity of $207,333 for a total of $689,166. So on the revenue side, that's the most the town can increase at this point in time for FY16. So when we received all the budgets in, not including Silver Lake's budget, let me make that clear. We put in a level funded assessment number for Silver Lake because that's what we had available to put in at that point in time. The current budget request that we have received totals $944,7737. So we are in a deficit at this point in time of $254,991.37. So that's where we stand right now with a level funded Silver Lake number. While I don't think that's a reality, but that's where we had for numbers, so that's what I'm presenting to you tonight. So on that same note, five items basically make up that increase. It's the special needs education, the special needs transportation. We have our health insurance. I'll go double check those. The regular day for the Halifax Elementary. And we have the retirement. So with those five items, we are over, in a deficit with just those five items. Those items add up to about $781,000. So that's the current perspective that Halifax has right now. I believe Charlie has a statement to read as well. So Charlie, do you want?
I'll do it while we're here, and I didn't ask for time.
Okay. So this is the point in time that we're at, where we've gone and we've asked all the department heads to double check their budget and realize that we are in a major deficit at this point in time. And more than likely, there's going to be cuts in people's budgets. From what, definitely from what's been submitted, but also possibly from those items. There's really no control over the special needs education. There's really no control over the retirement or the health insurance. The only other item that's very high on that list is $226,000 for the Halifax Elementary School. So we, there were two members from the Halifax Elementary School at our meeting last night. And we asked them, again, to make sure when they hold their budget hearing, that they do a deep dive and really investigate what those costs are. Okay.
Thank you.
Manager?
Yes?
Just to point the nose at seven.
Okay. We do not have as complete a revenue picture as our other towns do. Though I don't anticipate it's going to be significantly different than what you're hearing. Our elementary budget has an eight and a half percent increase. We don't have. We don't have a revenue increase available, so I just echo the same concerns that all the departments are going to have to take a look at their budgets, including the school.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just telling them about the...
First of all, I'd like to announce that our assistant superintendent, Joy Blackwood, is not with us tonight under doctor's orders. She has the flu, so I wish her a speedy recovery, and she can stay home of her germs. No, I do, I feel very bad for her. She was very disappointed she couldn't be here tonight. We are going to have another, yes?
Madam Chair, I would move that we recess our present monthly meeting for the purposes of setting up the posted public hearing of the budget.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or tensions?
Madam Chair, since my eyes aren't too good, I'm going to call at 7:00.
Okay, one minute ahead.
Well, by the time I get through topic, it'll be 7:00. Madam Chair, I would call to order the Kingston Silver Lake School Committee's public hearing and ask the superintendent, was it properly advertised throughout the district?
Indeed, it was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express and the...
Whitman Hansen?
I'm sorry. Then I apologize. The term is Halifax Express. And the case of report. Yes, it was. It was done several weeks ago. Who are the mental seven day requests? And I would say we get a lot.
I don't have to call it. You already opened it up.
Yeah, you've been asked if anybody wants to comment.
So does anybody like to make a comment under our public budget hearing? This is Mr. Charlie Seelig, the Halifax Town Administrator?
I'm Charlie Seelig. I'm the Town Administrator in the town of Halifax. The board of selectmen has authorized me to come for you to speak of the board's concerns about the budget process. For a long time, the town of Halifax has had a good working relationship with the Silver Lake Regional School District with a goal of providing a superior education for the children of Halifax, along with the children of Plinton and Kingston, while remaining affordable for the residents of the three communities. Now, our relationship has withstood the separation with Pembroke, the dot-com bust of 2000, 2001, and the Great Recession from which we are still recovering, along with the increased requirements mandated by the federal and state governments, the changes in technology, and a relative decline in funding by the state in support of education at the local level. We have had our disagreements, but we have not allowed those disagreements to become the focus of our relationship. Instead, we have been committed to good schools and a good education for our children because we feel that this is something that benefits not just the children and parents of Plinton, Kingston, and Halifax, but all residents, as a strong and vibrant school system makes for attractive and vital communities. It is therefore a profound disappointment that the Halifax Board of Selectmen views the vote taken by the Silver Lake Regional School Committee on January 8th to spend $619,000 from the excess and deficiency account for various projects. There are three reasons for this disappointment. First, the Silver Lake Regional School Committee failed to follow the dictates, the state's open meeting law. On December 23rd, it sent letters to the chairs of the boards of selectmen of Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax inviting the board members to the committee's meeting on January 8th, which would include a discussion to use a portion of the district's excess and deficiency fund balance to address a number of identified long-term capital needs. However, six days later, the posting for the meeting included no mention of this discussion, even though the statute requires that the agenda list all topics that the chair reasonably anticipates 48 hours in advance, which would be discussed at the meeting. Neither the letter of December 23rd nor the posting of December 29th included any mention that the committee was contemplating making a decision or would make a decision to amend the fiscal year 2014, 2015 district budget to increase the budget by $619,000 using funds from the excess and deficiency account. While there have been statements that the vote that night was legal, the Attorney General's office has written, "While it is not unlawful for a public body to discuss an unnoticed and unanticipated topic, the Attorney General strongly encourages public bodies to postpone discussion of topics that do not require immediate action and that were not listed in notice at least 48 hours before a meeting, particularly if those topics are ones that may have been of significant public interest." Now, the citations are the Open Meeting Law, Opinions of 2013, Number 87, 2013, Number 13, and 2012, Number 3. This matter was clearly anticipated, yet failed to be included in the agenda for the meetings on January 8th. Given that the three towns would have the ability to hold town meetings on revised budget within 45 days of the vote of the committee, that none of the projects for which funding was desired would be starting completed in the following weeks, and that by any reasonable standard, an increase in the budget of $619,000 was a topic of significant interest, the committee failed in complying with the Open Meeting Law. The Halifax Board of Selectmen has a right and perhaps a duty to file an official complaint with the Silver Lake Regional School Committee about this violation. But if it decided to do so, and the committee decided to rescind its vote of January 8th, and then revote at a future meeting, the town of Halifax and its residents would be worse off, not better, because the expense of holding a special town meeting would be doubled as the one scheduled for February 17th in Halifax would still be held, and a second one in response to the committee's second vote would have to be held at a later date. Given the town's financial constraints, the money for a second special town meeting would be better used to fund the town's programs, including those at the elementary school and the town's assessment of Silver Lake. The board's decision not to file a complaint is not that a complaint is not justified, but because even with the complaint, a re-vote and a special town meeting, the complaint would be a failure unless it would instigate a change in the committee's philosophy of how it should treat with the three communities. Second, along with its rejection by the dictates of the Open Meeting Law, the committee's vote on January 8th ignored the district's relationship with the three communities it serves. It appears that little or no thought was given that Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax would have the ability to vote on the amended budget by holding special town meetings. Perhaps some of the members thought meetings were not necessary since the assessments for the three towns would not be increased. Perhaps they thought the meetings were not warranted because of the worthiness of the projects being proposed. Perhaps they thought that the cost of holding a special town meeting in each community was sufficiently great that the boards of selectmen and the three communities would decline to hold those meetings and meekly accede to the wishes of the committee. But for whatever reason, the members declined to recognize that while the money in the excess and deficiency account appears on the financial statements of the district, the sources of that money are the taxpayers of Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax. It is money that the taxpayers of Halifax and the other communities have voted to take from their own personal funds in order to pay for the operations of the district. Now it is money that the committee feels should be spent on projects which it was not originally intended. The Halifax Board of Selectmen believes that the decision whether money should be spent from the excess and deficiency account should not be made solely by the members of the committee, but that the voters of Halifax should have a voice in a vote of a special town meeting despite the expense of holding one. That's why the board of selectmen will hold a special town meeting on February 17th and give the voters of Halifax an opportunity to vote on the amended budget. Before the vote was taken, the committee could have consulted with its staff to confirm what procedures would have to be followed once a vote was taken and communicate with representatives from the three communities about the timing of the vote and any expense that Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax would incur in order to hold town meetings on this subject. It passed up the opportunity to do so. That decision took what was a worthwhile discussion concerning the current and future capital and other needs of the district and transformed it into one about the lack of recognition by the committee. And in order for the district to be successful, it must work with the officials and residents of the three towns. That change does not diminish the relative importance of these projects, but it does change how these projects will be examined to the benefit of neither the district nor Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax. Lastly, the vote on January 8th failed to recognize the concerns of the officials in three communities as to how to use the excess and deficiency account was related to the recent settlement with the town of Pembroke and the release of the obligation set aside money in case the district was required to transfer the money to Pembroke as part of this settlement agreement. The money that the town of Pembroke is paying the district replaces money already spent by the district and assessed to the three communities. The money that was set aside and is now available for other use is also the result of assessments to the three communities. And while these amounts were assessed to the three communities, it is the taxpayers and residents of Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax that pay to have these monies spent and set aside. Now that more than $2 million, including the funds in the excess and deficiency account, are available to the district, the district, having previously discussed a long list of needs, capital and otherwise, has decided to spend some of this money without developing an overall plan of how all the money will be allocated. While there may have been some informal discussions concerning these funds, town officials have been concerned that this money derived from the taxpayers would not be returned to them. In fact, the district's staff has indicated at times that there is an intent to use some of these funds to replenish the excess and deficiency account after using the account to pay for the $619,000 increase in the budget. That would not require a vote by anyone. It would simply be a result of closing the books on June 30th and having unused and unallocated money become part of the excess and deficiency account to the extent allowed by law. And what are the remaining funds? Would these be spent on other projects? Would they be returned to the towns and the taxpayers? No word has been given and no communication has been received. A vote to spend down the E and D account without a plan as to how to use or allocate all the funds is worrisome, and again, focuses the discussion on a subject other than whether these projects need to be funded. As mentioned earlier, the Halifax Board of Selectmen is profoundly disappointed with the committee's decision of January 8th. However, that disappointment does not have to result in assundering of the relationship between Halifax and possibly Plinton and Kingston and the district. The bridge between the district and Halifax remains, perhaps a little worse for wear, but one that can be crossed by both the committee and the board. The board believes that the relationship with the committee is strong enough to withstand the disagreements that have existed in the past and in the present, and that the ability to disagree and to be able to point out when one party thinks that the other party has taken an action that is detrimental to the party's design of a healthy alliance. The board understands the committee will, from time to time, take the board to task for what it believes are the deficiencies of the board. The committee should expect no less from the board. In conclusion, in its desire to continue its partnership with the committee, the board asks the committee to commit to the following: that the rights of the voters and taxpayers of Kingston, Plinton, and Halifax are recognized; that the residents of the three towns are able to vote on how their money, which is willingly, however reluctantly, given from their pockets and law is spent; that the town officials, including the finance committees and board of selectmen in all three communities, are informed and consulted when there are discussions and upcoming votes on the district budget and finances; that when decisions are made, that the decisions are not made just in the best interest of the district, in the best interest of the children, parents, residents, and taxpayers. The board thanks you for listening to its concerns and, as always, looks forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Just to update the committee, I did ask Brett to look into whether there was a violation of Open Meeting Law or not, and Brett has not gotten back to me yet, just so you're all aware, and so the public is aware.
This discussion came up last Thursday when we had the meeting with the finance committee, and it was brought out by Seelig. And I kind of broadly interpreted the Open Meeting Law under old business. However, I can see that Mr. Seelig's position is a justifiable thing to bring before the committee. How the new Attorney General will interpret the change that will affect on October 1st, 2011 concerning the actual posting of things is legitimate. And I think it would be worth the courtesy to Halifax and maybe others concerned to see what response our attorney gets from the Attorney General's office. But I can't disagree with what Charlie said. I was using interpretations of old business being widely interpreted. I brought that up at the meeting last Thursday, but I can certainly see that a legitimate question has been brought up by the letter. And we should await that and see what happens then, because there might be other situations involved. And what happened then?
Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments and then of Mr. Halifax Town Administrator. We have a public hearing tonight to discuss the 2015 budget for Silver Lake. And though a few of his comments were related to the 2015 budget, I believe what we've done to the previous budget is really not what we're here to discuss tonight as part of our public hearing. Unless it's related to determining what our percentage increase is for 2015 versus 2014. And the documents that I've received from the administration, I believe, were based prior to our vote. So if we look at the percentage increase in our proposed budget, it is in fact... I'm just saying, we would take a comment, and I appreciate the fact that he had a chance to make those comments to us. Appreciate you listening to him. But what I'm saying, we're here for the 15 budget.
The 16.
Well, the 16 budget. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think that anytime we have leaders from our communities speak, you have to look at the public relations and the political result, and it does have an effect on 2016.
Okay. Madam Chair, then, if you wish to address some of the comments that he made relative to the current budget that we are presently spending, I, at the finance committee meetings combined the other night, was mistaken, made a misstatement because I was unaware of some of the stuff that...
Okay, the 15 budget is later in the agenda. We're having a public budget hearing about the 16 budget. We should make this up.
This probably should have been read at different times.
He gets, this is the public budget here, and I recognized him, he was...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Because I didn't have time during the first five minutes, I have more information for the committee regarding the FY '16 budget.
Are we talking about 15 or 16 now?
16.
This is 16.
16.
Yes, does it change?
So, for the 16 budget, I just didn't get to the last slide, and I just want the public to be aware of what the impact is on the tax bill for the residents of Halifax. So, again, with those numbers that I gave out previously in the first slide, it would bring the personal and property tax revenue total to $15,138,896.97. The average tax bill for the current fiscal year we're in right now is listed here at $274,774. The updated number from yesterday from our principal town assessor, the average home value for Halifax for the upcoming fiscal year budget that we'll be discussing is $276,440. The total town value is currently estimated as of yesterday at $769,379,000. The total town value is currently estimated as of yesterday at $769,379,800, and the estimated tax rate for the citizens of Halifax will be $19.68. So I have listed on the sheet the average estimated tax bill. That means that all that money on that first sheet that $689,000 is spent, the average tax bill would be $5,440.34. The difference between previous year would be an increase of $222.38. Thank you.
Is there any other comment?
Just asking since it's the discussion, now that you've heard the impact that this would have on the individual towns, can you take the opportunity to see what of this budget that's been presented can be reduced a bit? Because I know for Kingston, this budget represents 54% of our revenue, which means...
How many departments did you say?
There's over 60.
That means 60 other entities in town only get 46% of our revenue. So now that you've heard the dilemma that we're all in, I just hope that you appreciate it and respect what we're trying to do enough to try to peer down those numbers because it's unaffordable at this point.
Well, this is our first pass at the budget, and we always go through iterations. I have to say, I think the information the finance folks shared tonight was very detailed and very good, and I think will be very helpful as a backdrop in continuing the budget discussions. I thought it was wonderful information personally. Thank you.
I have two specific questions about the 16 budget.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm talking too soft, John? I said I have two specific questions about the 16 budget. The Formula 240 grant that you were talking about, which relates to the psychological services and special ed budget, Christine, can you give us a little bit more information about how much have we received in the past for that grant? How much has it been reduced by? And is this a continuing trend that we should expect to see and therefore a larger increase in our budgets each year? Because it also affects the local schools too. And is this a required service to be provided? So can you talk about that? And then I have another question.
These are required services that are still on AEPs that need to be required. The grant has had some decreases, but what's happening is the salaries are absorbing a bigger and bigger piece of those grants.
Is that because the salaries are growing? Is that what you're saying?
The salaries are in line with their normal step increases and things like that. But most of what we maintain is staff that is there, and it's just the salaries are absorbing a bigger portion of the grant.
Okay, so it's not that the grant has been reduced, it's that the salaries are consuming a larger portion? Is that what I'm understanding?
The grant is a slight decrease.
It is slightly decreasing.
It has not increased.
But it is clearly a combination of costs. Salaries is a significant part of that grant, and salaries in the sense of employees that we have, and salaries in the sense that we are hiring physical therapists, for instance, and they are a vital time to run.
Could the, could the committee explain to the public that those services for items like physical therapy are required, they're not falling under personal health insurance plans? I just want everyone to be aware of what's going on with that because it's come up in the past discussions.
There is this auditing, I describe it as an audit, that comes up. It determines that, yeah, let me back up for a second. So we have an obligation to deal with students between 3 and 22 and provide them with services that allow them to access education. It's all built around the idea of accessing education. And so if, if it is a case now, you lost skill in development that may make it difficult for somebody to be able to fully access the learning program in the school district may be required to provide those kinds of services, physical therapy, the ability to develop fine motor skills that allows you to write, those sorts of things. And oddly enough, it becomes a requirement with the school district. And my example is if you unfortunately were driving home tonight and you had your school age child in the car with you and were involved in an accident, not your fault, the insurance company would pay for physical therapy for you. On the other hand, the school would be expected to provide for physical therapy if it dealt with their ability to learn. So it is a service that's required, and it's a service that we provide.
Thank you.
Now, there is, when it comes to special education expenses, it is a roller coaster. It's a sign wave, it's not a gentle curve. In Halifax, we're looking at very large increases in Halifax this year, next year. This year, we actually looked at a decrease year over year. A few years ago, in Kingston, we saw a large increase in requiring community support for an overrun, which we're very grateful for. But if you looked at that budget, the next year it dropped, and it was a result of who's in the program, who ages out, who moves in, who sometimes leaves your community, and then goes the financial responsibility. In fact, in many cases, in all the bulk cases, if you look at public district special education, the growth rate, the increase over time, if you separate the data points, it turns out to decrease at more or less about the same rate as general education. It's just that there are some peaks and valleys along the way. Again, it's related to who is in the program, what is that population that you have today, and a reimbursement formula for those particularly expensive cases, part of the circuit rate program. That reimbursement rate has ranged since its inception, and its inception is about eight, nine years ago. I'm trying to remember when it started. It's gone from between 35 and 75 percent, 28% was the first year, and 75%. And it is a reimbursement formula, which means that we have an expense this year, and then next year we get the money for it because we follow plan. So there's several things that go into that. Yeah.
Can I ask one follow-up question about that? You talked about, and I know there are very stringent privacy laws, and I'm not trying to ask any questions regarding that, but in terms of thinking about forecasting, you had mentioned that, you know, the children or students will age out of these programs and the services that you provide. So you have access to that information. So you know based on, and you have to make a set of assumptions, that person will remain in this district, in this community, even at the local level in here, you know, sort of an issue that we deal with at both levels, as everybody knows. Is that something that you can let us know about? Not the students, but the potential cost reductions? Because sometimes when we're dealing with funding a budget, if we know or can project that there may be a one-year increase or a two-year increase and that there's a reduction, we may be able to fund certain things a different way in order, but if we know there's going to be a cost reduction. Obviously, if we have to assume that that cost is going to continue, then we have to look at it differently to make sure that the budget is sustainable. So is that something that you could work with us more closely on?
I think that's a discussion we could have, not in a public meeting, but in discussions that we have. You mentioned privacy, and we live in small towns, and it's not too hard, in many cases, to figure out who the people might be. But are there ways to share with you what our projections are based upon the population we know today and who might be aging, who will be aging? I mean, 22 is a hard fast line. Yeah, we certainly do that. Those are some things that we do in term.
I would imagine, and that would help us.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I have a different question about, so in the FY '15 budget, one of the funding sources that was used for FY '15 was a one-time revenue stream from capital outlay reserve that had been available. That capital outlay, the balance that had remained after the end of last year, has been closed out, so it's no longer being carried as an open balance in financial statements. So my question, looking at FY '16, is are there, and the costs associated with the budget have been built into the budget. So the base budget of FY '15 was funded with one-time revenues. Looking at the FY '16 budget, is there a plan to replace those revenues somehow outside of the assessment? Or are there other one-time revenues that are going to be used to fund the budget?
I would have to go back because I don't fully remember all of the items, but my recollection is that we were using those items. We used that money for items that had long lives. So we used it as part of the computer replacement program, and we keep computers for seven, eight years in classrooms. So it is, and in fact, I believe that we actually finished up the replacement cycle in middle school last year. So I'll have to go back and look, but I do not believe that any of those funds were used under current tests. Christine, do you remember anything about, I don't have the 15 budget book with me.
All right, do we have any sort of revenue projections? Can you share some information on how you're going to approach revenues so that we can try to get some context around it, see if the projected numbers that we're carrying are realistic?
The biggest part of our revenue, the biggest part of our revenue is somewhat unpredictable, is for the state, and I need to get that number from the state. I think we all remember what happened a few years ago, when that number changed dramatically from the state. Our other revenue sources that we have are pretty predictable, but it is the state's number that is key to all of this. You know, our other revenue sources are, for instance, tuition from standing districts who come to our school for seeking educational education. That's not going to vary a whole lot, and the rate that we can charge is set by the state. It hasn't been set for next year yet. Those kinds of things.
Is that a rate that is reviewed and revised by the state annually? Or is that sort of a rate that's been in place for 10 years and is...
So it is set every year by the state, and every school district in Massachusetts files, calls it end-of-the-year report. Not a particularly fancy name, but a descriptive name because it describes the end-of-the-year expenditures. We all report them in the same expense categories. In fact, they should be reviewed by an outside auditor to make sure that the numbers are very reasonable and with reasonable methodologies. From that, from that information that is submitted for public education, is how they set the rate every year. If you look at it and go online and see what those rates are, you can see whether they change or not. And not necessarily exactly, not as a percentage increase for each school. It's based on actual expenditure from the entire year.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Seeing no other hands, I would move that the... Joe?
A couple of groupings.
Saturday.
Thank you. Last year, we had an operating budget of about $22.5 million. And we had assessments to the towns, the three towns combined, of $14,117,000. We received $8,396,000 elsewhere. It's not, it wasn't from the tax on the residents of the three towns. The other thing I wanted to just bring up quickly, and just because the towns of Halifax and Kingston mentioned it, part of what we do and a part of the way the assessments were are all based on populations that the towns sent to us. This year, over last year, we count our students every year on October 1st. Town of Kingston is sending us 38 more students. At roughly $12,900 is approximately $491,000. The town of Halifax is sending us an additional 17 students. Again, at the roughly $13,000 number, it's about a $220,000 increase just in the students we're receiving. That's, that's what it is. I mean, that's on average, that's what we spend per student on average and not on average. That's what the towns sent us for increased numbers over last year.
With the state piece in there or not in there?
No, this is, the 12,000 number is what we spent. It was DOE, DESE comparison costs.
That's across.
Across the board.
Including.
And, yeah.
Mr. Chase? I want to disagree with you about the Halifax number.
Well, I'm looking at the 2013 report, and I'm looking at the 2014 report. And the regular, the high school went up from 421 to 422, 421 to 424. And the middle school went from 191, oh, went down, I'm sorry, went down, I did the math backwards.
Thank you.
Halifax went the other way. I am sorry for that.
I just wanted to clarify that because I already told the town that, you know, our percentage went down, I don't want them to...
Yeah, no, I did the math backwards. Kingston went up, Halifax went down. I'm sorry for that. Pulten stayed roughly the same, one or two students. Sorry about that.
Madam Chair, again, seeing, Sue's got a question.
I was asked a question about the specific budget line. I think, you know, we looked at the increase, increases in lines that had a big percentage increase, though some of those lines, the actual value of them is quite low. The line that, of course, is always a concern is the teaching line. Even though the percentage is lower, the dollar thing is huge, dwarfs all the other ones like that easily. And so just looking at the bunch of detail I had from before, I mean, I, one line, one large increase is in the number of eights.
What line do you want?
It's 2301-231.
How about the three-digit one?
I'm sorry, I thought of the four.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So I made this chain mistake once, and that's why I, I vote for...
That is only Harry's order, but the salaries for six eights was what we had for last year. This year, we actually have, there have been some students that are within the programs, and that calculation's now up to eights, eights, I mean, 11 eights that are going to specific students.
So then the six actually went to...
Was for 50, and they probably noticed that the 70 are letting, had made that change.
It is changing to 11 then?
11, correct.
Five additional eights?
But what, weren't two coming up from the middle school with the students? Thought we talked about that. Thought there was something.
I wanted to check on that, that could be correct, why the nine is...
I thought everybody was talking about that.
The middle school eights line is also...
Mr. Green?
I know, I just... The latest back to a little bit about 2015, but as we were putting money aside every year into a fund, I mean, we're not, we were paying retired health costs for Pembroke pending the ultimate settlement. I was wondering if that reduction, there should be a reduction, is that taken into account in the budget? Or am I incorrect?
That line is still budgeted for the gross amount that we're paying, and so we are still paying those costs, but it is an offsetting revenue that's funding the budget as well.
So next year, Silver Lake is obligated to pay.
Sorry?
It's okay. Silver Lake is obligated to pay for the healthcare costs of working retirees. However, the expectation is that next year we will be getting about $150,000 from the town of Pembroke for what would be their share of those costs.
So it's going to be a yearly?
So that, that'll go on well for as long as...
As long as they're...
As long as they collect health insurance. They have health insurance. And so, I think I mentioned before, there's always the budget, and then there are the assessments. And so the assessments will show that as a revenue source, we mentioned, and that will reduce the assessment.
In 16, no.
In 16... In 16, it will go, it won't be shown, it will go to reduce the assessment for 16, but it won't affect the budget for 16. It continues to be an obligation that we have.
Okay, no, I was just trying to give the, the take. Okay.
We will get you a more detailed answer on the aides, but my recollection is that there have been increases of aides in Mr. DeBeal Building. Mrs. Springer is absolutely right, we have some middle school students who are coming up to us with some significant challenges. They've had, and for the most part, one-on-one aides in elementary schools that continue at high school as much as we'd like to get them to move closer towards independence. And on the other hand, those, those aides are, allow us to maintain them in our school rather than move them out. At the high school, we really have no instructional aides except for special education aides, I mean, for the most part. And so, when you see an increase in classroom aides, it is there to support the students that we have in special ed programs. The other change that has happened in the last few years is, is the requirement that we, that we now deal with students until they turn 22. So, we have a population of students in the building who are past the normal graduation age, but we are, we continue to work with them, provide them services. That has led to some decreases and actually expanded our population. Again, if we didn't provide those services here at Silver Lake, they would be provided through the local out-of-district special education programs. Special education is an area that is, that is changing and evolving as, as before. Sort of a combination of court decisions and legislative enablement and act of change. What we provide, and frankly, there has been great success with so many students and their ability to transition into adulthood and into, into learning.
Madam Chair? Maybe Mr. Green or Superintendent Tuffey could assist me with this, but since we have such a distinguished honor of guest, we were talking about Silver Lake Regional School District's dependence on state aid, and I was wondering if we have any legislative action on the think tank to reformulate the formula for state aid.
Well, I was, I was at a meeting, I was part of my report, I was at a meeting on Division VII on Friday, last Friday. It was an interesting meeting because there were two senators there, one Republican, one Democrat. There were six members of the House there, three Democrats, three Republicans, the cables. So, you got a census, not one. Everybody said do not expect any change in the Chapter 70 formula. Even though they'd like to do it, they know that the revenues simply aren't there to do it. So, to answer your question, it doesn't look like fiscal 16 is going to bring any change to the formula, unfortunately, but it's been the same since about 93.
It's hard enough to predict the formula as is, but if they ever do readjust or relook at it, it's going to make our jobs even that much more difficult to project the, you might get from the state.
I wouldn't want to say the number, that if they followed the original law in 1993, what it should be compared to what it is, it's, it's an astronomical number. Madam Chair, I would, I would move that we end the formal publication of our 2016 budget.
Okay. Ready discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions?
I would suggest a recess.
I'm going to allow, I'm going to allow a five-minute recess, please.
And we are back. Continuing to run the agenda. Do we have a student?
No.
Okay. Is there any public participation?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Has nothing to do with budget. Is the school committee going to address or discuss the school calendar in relation to all of the snow days and what options there may or may not be for handling makeup days, getting a waiver? I don't know what our options are, but clearly a lot of people are asking the question about...
Under the superintendent, at the end of the agenda.
It is, I don't...
Ten to the end of school?
If somebody asks a question, I think we can move on the agenda to address them if the superintendent has a response.
So...
So, what, what can we...
I'm sorry, let me just, let me just gather my thoughts here for a second. Actually, let me start this, and we afford, and we start this. We've had eight days, eight snow days so far. So far.
Thanks.
And, and before we talk about that, since I have so many town officials here, I want to thank all the towns for their help. Because while I follow this, this, I have a little sense of what you're going through because I just followed this little piece against them. People have continued to take my calls at funny times, saying, so we're going to have school? What are the roads like? Are you sure? What about the sidewalks? And the town have been very gracious, very walkable, and frankly, full of lots of good information because we all care about getting children and staff safely to the buildings and home again, and the towns know what the roads are like better than I do. I just see a very small piece of bit me. And it really has been a great partnership this year as the years come by, and it just absolutely shocked me that I could fall forward since Paul Basler at 4:30 in the morning and say, so Paul, what do you think? You know, I can call the Halifax, Halifax Police Dispatch and say, so what are the roads like? And that'll be, you know, pull the police that are out there, so, thank you very much. Right now, having said that we have eight days, our ten in any school is the 24th, which is Wednesday. So, what are we going to do about making up days? Frankly, at this point in time, the very last thing I ever wanted was cancel April vacation. I think that that would be, would be more than problematic. We, pretty clear from the commissioner's memo that he has not changed the view from years come by, which is that any, any snow days that we've had up until now, we need to find a way to make up, that they are not going to waive those. When we get to, when you get into March, April, sort of there, they may talk to you about what's happened, but not at this point in time. So, our, our choices are pretty limited. Our choices are, we can take day, holiday days away. And in fact, I'm going to suggest that we start a discussion about, about Good Friday. Just because that is a day that would be, that would shorten up the school calendar, and if we get any more snow days, I think that's something that ought to be on the table. Good Friday, by the way, as people probably know, is April 3rd this year, it's a date that shifts around. So, April 3rd is that, makes it a short week. Frankly, just to sort of have the instruction time in April rather than in, in June. I mean, it is not just trying to, to get us out earlier, it's trying to be productive at the time. A day in April is worth way more than a day in June. Any day after Memorial Day is, starts to get a little iffy in some ways. And we can come up with April vacation two weeks later. So, I think that we could probably accommodate that, but that's a committee decision, something I think we're talking about. After that, I think we're looking at Saturday, Saturday classes to make up days. So, that's it. Pretty, pretty limited as to, as to what we can do. As long as we're talking about days, this really is a very unusual and unprecedented year. I went back and pulled up the last 12 years' worth of, worth of snow days to have some perspective here. And I say snow days, you all may remember, we had some hurricane days that we didn't have used to have, but we had those in the last few years. If we take the last 12 years and say, what have we had for snow days? We, in three of those years, we had zero snow days. In four of those years, we had one snow day.
One year we had a hurricane.
Hurricane is, and hurricane, and one year we had two snow days. That is by far the vast, the vast majority of those 12 years that I just talked about. In those 12 years, we've only had one year with six days, one year with five days, and two years with, two years with four days. And so, it is, this has been very unusual. As we talk about what are we going to do and how are we going to plan for the future, I think this is the exception, not the rule, that we need to deal with. My other suggestion, of course, is that, I think the committee years ago wisely chose to start before, and I say years ago, I've been in the district 14 years, and we started before, before Labor Day. And I think continuing to start before Labor Day makes all the difference in the world. There are some districts right now, City of Boston is, is talking about, is, in fact, is committed to taking two of the, two of what had been holidays, Monca Hill Day and evacuation, they had two of the lesser-known holidays, I might add, outside of self-accounting, and go to school because they're running to the end of the year, not our choice. So, starting before Labor Day gives us, gives us those options. Can I answer your question?
What is our contract?
Please?
What is our contractual last day?
30, June 30.
Well, June 30, it's, 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 it's not just a contractual obligation, it's a state requirement. 24, Wednesday. So, there are still, there are still four more days, still four more days available and, and before we run, before we have to take days out of, out of vacation time or for Saturday classes.
Superintendent Tuffey, if we did do an unorthodox day like a Good Friday, isn't it DESI regulation that you need to have 80% of your students actually come to school and participate for it to count?
There, there is a requirement, and, and I'm not sure what that number is, but it is around 80%. That's the problem with Saturday classes, is that if we say we're going to have a class on a Saturday and not enough students show up, then it really becomes a, it doesn't count, except for the people who showed up, they're just incredibly annoyed that they took time to count. So, Saturdays tend not to be a great option for that reason. We have minimum participation requirements, yeah. Thank you.
I have a question, John.
Sure.
When it comes to changing the school calendar, do you need each school committee...
Yes.
...to do it? Okay, so it's not just our decisions to be here, it would have to go up to the elementary school committees?
School committee, yeah.
Okay.
The school calendar is on, I, it's on the school committee, I can make the recommendation, you can make a decision.
Okay.
So, can I ask, when, if you're being February, we're probably being, well, just eight weeks away, how long would you want to wait before you ask us to make a...
I think tonight would be a pretty good night to, well, to think, to think about it, and certainly have to float this with the other, other committees as you allow, but now, now's the time that we need to, need to do it.
Well, we could make a motion to allow you the discretion to make that decision, which would allow these things.
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
The governor to remind people it's the first night of Passover as well, so it's...
And it does, it does run into the, into the Jewish holidays, which may, which may not make it as viable an option as, as appears on first blush.
Coming from somebody who has passed tradition, I would move to give the superintendent the discretion on using Good Friday, April 3rd this year, under conditions that this night be looked upon as a precedent, and, and also that the administration be advised to faculty to be sensitive to those involving testing and so forth. We've mentioned that for the Jewish holidays that are in the fall. That would be a motion I would make.
Second.
Is there ready discussion?
I'm concerned about meeting the threshold if it is 80% because of not only the Jewish holiday, but also the Christian holiday as well. And, you know, some parents might choose to perform parental choice with the holiday of importance to many families, so.
To guess, the sooner we let them know the better.
Agreed, agreed.
Well, it, it, as part of discussion again, we still have four days that are up in the air. This would be a fifth day, should we need it. If that's what you're looking at, or you're trying to close school earlier and use this day, which would be...
I'm, at this point in time, I'm frankly inclined, I am getting, this is not scientific, but I'm sure with you that on a regular basis, I get calls from people who say that Good Friday, they're not as observant as they used to be, and it is a problem because daycare is an issue, and they need you to work. It's a holiday that tends not to be given to many, to many people. I'm also getting phone calls from people who say, I have vacation plans already set up, and the sooner we can, you know, and you're now affecting them, and is there anything you can do? So, frankly, I would love to have this, this out in the, in the, in the blogosphere that it's something we're talking about, and I think it's something that our school councils might be asked to weigh in or, or, you know, sense of the meeting, at a PTO meeting, to see how people might feel about it. We're certainly not trying to force people into a decision one way or the other, but the reality is, we've got to get 180 days in, and limited, limited options to do it.
Madam Chair, I would just stick with the motion I made, that it not be looked upon as a precedent, only because of the circumstances and the administration will be as sensitive as possible. I can't say it any other way.
I, I agree with that. The question was, are we looking to reduce the school year? Are we using this as a fifth day? Are we using it as a day to tie? I had this school year earlier, that's my question. If you, if you get all your school committees to say that they're willing to go to school on Good Fridays, and have school on Good Fridays, and, and screw along the 26th because we don't need those last two days, would that be your intention? It would be...
23rd, go back.
Whatever, 23rd. Madam Chair, I'm making this so because we don't meet, we meet again on September 12th. I know we're going to be meeting the 26th, but our regular next meeting, I think it's the 12th of September.
Locked, yes.
I think it'll be...
September?
Locked, maybe, March. March, March 12th, and maybe you'll have a clue what, if you lose something.
You know, I mean, I think, I think to Joe's, to Joe's questions, by the time I get through the cycle of, of school committees, I will know, I will know whether or not I've had another day. And frankly, if I've had another day, I'm there. If I get through, if I get through the cycle of school committees and I don't have, I haven't called another, another snow day, I'm now in the middle of March, towards the end of March, and, you know, a whole lot more comfortable and saying, okay, we'll just leave it the way it is, and we'll leave disruption for people to...
That's all right. Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Can I ask, were there two no? I was on the case as well, too. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else under public participation? Seeing none, approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm going to do that, I gotta go. And we have so many of them, right?
So, I do the regular session first?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we approve the regular session minutes of January 8th, 2015. Okay?
Can we...
Is there a second?
You can still say.
I can second it, yes.
Second, is there any discussion?
Let somebody else say.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions. I move that we approve the joint meeting of the Joint Committee of Superintendents, C31 and Silver Lake Regional of January 8th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Extension.
Okay, now we have a bunch of executive sessions, but I'm not going to move each one, I'm going to move them all as we go, so checklist, we can check them off.
Can we release them?
Yes.
Okay, good.
This is, we're moving to release them.
I, I would say that the executive sessions that are printed.
Oh, I like that. I move that we approve and release the execution, executive session minutes as printed in our agenda for, what is today, February 12th, 2015.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
But I'm still not talking to you, all right?
It's all right, you can talk, people have talked to me for years.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
One more? Executive session of, of January 8th.
We need to approve and release.
Oh, it was something, sorry. Yes, I move that we approve and release the executive session minutes of January 8th, 2015.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you. There is no curriculum corner tonight, principals reports, Mr. Mulvaney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few items on the agenda tonight. Calendar update, due to the historic snowfall and subsequent school cancellations, we've had to juggle and reschedule many important events here at the high school, just a handful of note for you, and at least we'll have this in the report, obviously, but our native testing for our seniors, which we talked about last meeting, was scheduled for January 29th, it has been moved to February 26th after vacation. Our CTE open house, which was scheduled for February 11th, has been moved to March 4th. Representative Paulter's substance abuse program, which was scheduled for February 10th, has been moved to February 25th. And our, the high schools' parent teacher conferences, which was scheduled for February 5th, has been moved to March 19th, which is in the middle of the third quarter, so that was the best date possible for that. That's updated on our website, and will be in our reports, just some cancellations that we've been following on. Dates that have not been affected thus far, social hosting presentations on, which we've talked about in the past, this is our third year of social hosting presentations, on March 5th at 7:00 PM, we will host our first of two social, social hosting presentations at the high school. Jay Campbell from the law offices of Campbell, Campbell Edwards, and Conroy will present on social hosting law for our parents. And on March 9th, which is a Monday, Kathy Meyer Sullivan will be presenting Taylor's message in the auditorium at 7:00 PM as well, two opportunities for our parents and our community. I've sent out a letter to our, to our community with great detail regarding both of these presentations, it'll be on our website, and I'll talk about more in our next meeting. Also upcoming after vacation is our eighth grade program studies, our curriculum night, we'll be here. Mr. Field, we'll be sending out a message to our parents tomorrow evening, but on February 24th, we will hold at the auditorium, it goes from 6:30 to 8:30, and I'll have, again, more detail on that during our next meeting as to how that went. Gradu- gradu- graduation, excuse me, rates. I, every time around this time of the year, the state comes out with our, the graduation and the dropout rates for each school across the state. Again, happy to report for Silver Lake Regional High School, a four-year adjusted rate, which is, the graduation rate is, any student that started with us as freshmen and finishes with us as seniors after, since reporting is cleaned up over the state. We're at 98.1%.
That's awesome.
Of graduation rate, which is a very impressive number, we continue to stay there over the last few years, so I'm very proud of that, and our dropout rate, which is year to year, which means anyone that is registered as a Silver Lake student for the 2013, 2014 school year, and we're at 0.4%, which is, again, under 1% for dropout rate, which is, again, an outstanding number, so I'm very proud of the district for that. Finally, tonight, we have field trip requests, we have two of them. One is our student, these are both yearly trips that we take, one is our student council field trip, they have state, state convention located in Hyannis, eight students in our advisory will be attending the workshops this year, two of our students, seniors Casey Fitzpatrick and Lucas Rial will be presenting at the convention, and the topic will be leadership style. The student council is up for a number of awards, including Gold Council, which is the top award in the state, we have earned this award over the last four years and are looking to make it five in a row. This is, the reason I bring the trip up, is it overnight trip for our student council, so just bring it to...
I would move the trip as the principal suggests.
Okay. The second trip is another overnight, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Field.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Sorry, I went a little quickly there, I almost fixed that, I mean, yeah, okay. The, the second trip I'm bringing up is the horticulture or the FFA field trip from our CTE department, they're going to go up to Sturbridge, March 16th to March 18th for the FFA convention, Future Farmers of America. Fifteen students will be attending with, along with our advisor, who's a horticulture teacher, woman, Robert, she has placed our floriculture team, which is flower design in the competition, and also our nursery landscape team in the competition as well. And our senior, Julia Boylan, who's the president of our FFA chapter, has been entered into the individual presentation competition, so I'm asking again permission, this is an overnight trip up to Western Massachusetts, which they will be traveling to in the fall.
I would move the recommendation of the principal for the overnight trip as presented.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, are there any questions? Mr. Dukefield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a couple of things that, I'm going to go over a school update, obviously due to the snow, we've had to also move some of our events, parent teacher conferences, we will have to reschedule that. Twice we've had that event scheduled, but twice the snowstorm came in, so, so we're going to go for three.
Third time's a charm.
Third time's a charm, that's my...
Or Tuesday, or Wednesday.
I guess.
Or Friday.
So, so...
Thursdays, we have school committees, so forget it.
There are so many dates now that have already moved into spaces too, so now that we have to move this a third time, I'm dodging everything that's moved and everything that's already in the calendar, so, but we will be doing that, Mr. Tucci and I have already had conversations about that, we'll be sending that out to the community. We weren't lucky enough to get our honor roll recognition in last Friday, so we were able to do that. We had 146 eighth graders and 152 seventh graders that attended our honor roll recognition. Along with that, when I send out the invitation, I also send out something to the Boston Celtics too, which they send something out to anyone that we recognize of achieving academic excellence, which they get a free ticket, and then just a family member will have to buy their ticket, and they get to go to the Boston Celtics. So we also sent that out, that's something we started to do this year. We also have upcoming our sixth grade parent orientation night, that's on March 3rd from 6 to 8, that's when the three elementary schools send out messages, and the sixth grade parents come up, and we talk about our curriculum, talk about our school, and it's really a great evening for, for incoming parents to understand the middle school and the cultural climate of our school, so we're very excited about that. At that time, I also do my roadshow, where I go to the three elementary schools, and I talk to the teachers at the elementary schools, and I also get a chance to talk to the students about the transition. So we're very excited about that, that's part of our transition process. We also, along with that, is our program of studies, which we are posting on our website starting tomorrow, so that people can have access and start that process. The second thing I would like to talk about is a donation, so we're very fortunate to have a donation from Abroad Hill Financial, and Donald Howard from Kingston has donated $2,704 to the Silver Lake Regional Middle School, which I ask for him to accept.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we accept the gift and ask the principal to send our gratitude to the donor.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
So, I thank you for that, very gracious donation to the middle school, to, we're going to send a thank you to Abroad Hill and to Donald Howard for their donation, so...
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Dukefield? Report of special committees, Silver Lake Education Association. No report? Administrative review?
We have...
Come on, add in here.
Oh, add in here.
See, it's getting late, you're...
We, we're, we have a meeting coming up soon.
A schedule meeting to deal with some, some issues.
Some appointment issues. And we just completed our evaluation.
Okay. Building and grounds?
Thank you. We have not met, as is the talk of conversation capital plan, and we're optimistic that will be set, and will be voted at town meetings, and we'll be able to start the work as a children or a school.
Career and technical education?
No meeting.
Okay, chairman's report.
Report.
What? Did you have something?
No, you said we don't have a report yet.
All right, I just want to share with the committee an email I had received from a parent, Mr. Christopher Moran wrote to me and expressed his concern about some of the lighting on our buildings being out. I did get in contact with the administration, and they did provide me with an answer to his questions, of which I related to him. There was a few lamps around the outside of the middle school that were out, we were awaiting repairs for the actual lamps themselves and not just the bulbs, so...
You can't get them to turn on.
No, this all happened before the snow, okay? I want to say that this came in on Friday, January 16th, this is when I got this. I said, so, this is all before any of these snowstorms or anything else, but I did have an opportunity to drive around the buildings, and it seems that most of the lights are in working order, but I did find out an interesting fact that a lot of us, our lights are on timers.
Or they are, at different times too, but no.
And they do, they go on and off at different times, so I just, I told him that I would release to all of them doing that, and, and thank you to Mr. Moran for checking in and expressing his concern over maintaining our buildings, so. Legislative agents?
Okay, we've talked about a couple of things, how soon will be available, March 4th, as it stands now. Everybody talked about the January revenues in the state, which were outstanding, which they were, but I remind people that January is an estimated tax month, so far in February, not so good, it's understandable. John spoke earlier, and I think he's going to, I don't know if he's going to mention what, Joey might mention, a lot of the grants, federal and state, are drying up and will continue to dry up, so I wouldn't depend on grants at state or federal level in the coming year, that's my prediction. I would guess, as I've said before, that the Chapter 70 will probably be level funded, and an interesting, a Supreme Court decision came up involving the town of Middleburg, and it involved health for retirees, where municipalities and the Supreme Court set it up as a precedent case, that retirees' health benefits can be reduced by a body as long, an elected body, selectmen, school committee, without going to collective bargaining as long as the participation doesn't go below 50%. That's it.
Thank you. Negotiations, employee relations?
We have not met, but we're waiting to firm up some dates for support staff, but we need to meet with them.
Still not collaborative?
We did have a meeting on, February 5th, which is why Jason and I could not attend the FinCom meetings in Kingston that took place. We barely had a forum, Casey had an emergency that night.
I had an elementary school committee meeting.
Yep, and one, our chairperson actually had a shooting in her town, and the schools walked out, so, so she wasn't able to come at the last minute, but anyway, we had a great meeting, and nobody was hurt, so that was fine. We reviewed the executive director goals, should be a second opinion, we reviewed the treasurer evaluation, very excited about the new space coming up at the pilgrim area collaborative in the building in Flemish, we signed the lease, and they're starting construction, so we're very excited about that. We have a community fair coming up, the enrollment is holding, the budget is where it should be, and I know we're in negotiations with contracts at this time, and thank both Casey and Jason for being on that subcommittee.
Thank you. I do not believe we have a policy meeting set.
There are no, no policy meetings set, and for the time being, we are up to date with our policies.
I would move...
Treasurer's report?
Okay, Joe.
Okay, we've got 10 regular warrants circulated, for a total of $829,173.83, we have two payroll warrants circulated, $1,353,802.70, for a grand total of $2,182,920.53.
Thank you.
Union 31. Union 31 was scheduled to meet on January 26th, I believe, and the meeting was canceled, and it has not been rescheduled yet. As we reschedule that meeting, I will bring you that information.
But we did have a joint meeting. We had that joint meeting.
Yes, but we were all here for the joint meeting, and I don't think I need to...
No, I'm good.
All right. Assistant superintendent, who wants to speak for tonight?
I will.
Okay.
I will.
Do a good job early.
As you, as you mentioned, Mrs. Blackfield unfortunately is under the weather, so, so you're getting me instead. Two things to mention, you have in your package this bright pink paper, this is a list of the MCATs exam, and we hand it out, supposed to give people a sense of feel for what's going on in the school buildings related to testing. It looks more complicated than it needs to be if you're just a high school parent, because this lists both high school and elementary MCATs, so please don't look at this and think, these, my gosh, all these high school students are so overwhelmed, many of these dates are elementary testing dates, but I just wanted to give a sense of what it looks like and when we're doing those things. The other thing that we wanted to mention, and it follows really what it was pretty good to say, and that is some information about an academic support grant that we have gotten for some time, as you may remember, the academic support grant for, I don't know, five, six years, I'm not quite sure how long it's been, has been used to provide MCATs for mediation for math equals nine at Milcoast, summer school for Milcoast in those subjects. Unfortunately, it is a victim of cuts, and so it will not be available for next year. So this summer, while we will be offering the program, there will be a tuition charge that goes with it. Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment that is very disappointing to hear, because there are so many students who did take advantage of that, and I'm not sure that parents are going to be able to... It's very disappointing to hear.
Well, Madam Chair, I just think it's, it's, it's going to be the routine, because I would let a superintendent today who had the same feeling you did, but these grants are not going to work.
And I understand that.
But it's a bad, it's a bad...
It's a different program.
I know.
All right.
Thank you.
Director of Business Services.
Thank you.
Hi, are you feeling well over there?
I'm doing good, thank you.
You know, you know it sounds good.
On tonight's financial, we've completed seven months of the year until our recent snowstorms, we were doing fine. This financial is referring to all of the first storms, we're not seeing a full impact of the storms, we've actually had to repeat which remove snow, because as you can see, highly increasing the beginning. We do as best we can, and we will see those bills as they start to flow through the financial. There are no new deficits on the financial, so I just wanted to mention a few things that we've mentioned in the past. On page four of the detail, under CTE, the technology accounts, there is a deficit for software that they purchased, and that was one of the items that was on the software list tonight, that's the competency tracking that's used in the CTE program, so we have bills headed into next year's budget, that is, there are several deficits in the telephone accounts because of this calculation, E-rate reimbursement, so I have, we actually still have utilities for next year, so that has not been up to date yet, for the new, for the new 2006 budget. And of the other area of concerns, in the special education area of page 89, areas that we've talked about before, the contract service account, and we've discussed that, and then also the transportation account, we've discussed how that, that includes our students that have specific transportation needs, as well as students that are temporarily injured or ill, and would need some transportation in the short term, so that count, which we'll put down for next year, we believe we have a moving need going into next year. Are there any questions?
I know, I don't know. If we have enough surplus, is that we can move money around to handle the deficits?
We do, yes.
Thank you.
Christine, do you, have you heard anything about the state refunding anybody money for this, you know, unexpected snowstorm?
There has been some discussion, and we have been asked to provide some information on costs of the January storm. So we have been providing that information to see reimbursement as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the other thing I'm listed for is stabilization funds. Some questions have come up about that. One of the questions that came up is, can a stabilization be funded through similar mechanisms? The only way we can fund the stabilization account is through an appropriation on our budget. Even if the funding source is something outside of the traditional funding sources, we would still need to do that within a budget. If we chose to amend it, we could do an amended budget during the year, sending money to a stabilization fund, if that was the desire of the committee. But as of right now, we do not have a stabilization fund. One town has approved it. That's how I'm going to frame it. There was a question if we could move money from E&amp;D to stabilization. We would not be able to do that. We would have to move it, they would have to be on a budget, and then it could be funded through E&amp;D to stabilization, but it would still have to go through an appropriation on the budget. If there are more questions, please let me know.
Question, stabilization funds that were voted by some towns and others at the town meetings, that we can try and do a sample, we're talking about?
Correct, yes.
And can, just to highlight which towns supported that, which towns didn't?
Plington is the town that has voted for that.
To have a sample.
Yes.
And the other two towns at this point have been not supported. Thank you. I might talk more about that one.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Just a quick comment. And we all know how much snow we've had and all that stuff, and we're waiting to see the bill, but all in all, they've done the owner's work and done an excellent job. The summer has limited mobility. We're down to asphalt and we're down to cement, so thank all those involved that have to do with that. I, we actually use an outside contractor to help supplement what we can do, because we can't do everything.
Correct.
We can push the snow around the parking lot.
But we can't pick it up.
So we can't pick it up. And so we have needed an outside contractor to do a bucket load, to pick it up and move it, not down some of those three piles.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, they've done a good job. Most of the parking lot is still inaccessible and sidewalks are very changed.
I'd like to reiterate that. And also, when you're answering the state's questions about moving snow, I'm sure if you were picking up snow this week, you were picking up January snow. Because it's still here. So I think that, you know, it's really false to say, because we didn't bring the lifters in for the January event necessarily, that we're really still moving January snow. And I don't know how you have to answer your questions, but make sure they know how much we've spent to move that snow. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think the superintendent will agree. Unfortunately, when you're looking for federal money for reimbursement, that's where it comes from. The red tape is unbelievable, and this time refrains how quickly you can do it. So I know the superintendent is working as quickly, but it is typical federal program. It's red tape, the war.
In years gone by, there have been similar programs. Unless they radically change the form, you know how to deal with it. And unfortunately, unless they change the program, past programs, it had to be, there were specific dates that were covered.
Thanks.
Nonetheless, if we get any money for it all, we won't.
We thank you for trying.
Superintendent.
I have listed on here the 14-15 budget, because my understanding is that it was a request that that be on, on there.
I think the, in view of discussion we've had tonight, I don't have any further questions.
I have, I had met with the chairperson of the board of selectmen in Plington, as well as the chairperson of the finances committee, and they requested that I make the following motion due to the trust that seems to have been created through what we've did on January. So I'm going to move that we, to agree that the committee return all excess funds to the district towns once the following expenditures have been satisfied. One, the 2014-15 budget is funded as voted in May of 2014. It might have been June as well with Kingston. Number two, that once E&amp;D reaches a cap of 5% as allocated by law. Number three, town meeting approves to fund the Silver Lake capital plan as voted 1-8-15. And number four, that all expenses relating to Pembroke litigation are satisfied, which I understand is a minimal amount.
I'll second that. Just discuss it.
Hey, discussion.
Can we do them individually, because I don't think I would. Can we go, I didn't hear.
Sure.
Can we do them individually, please?
The first item, to satisfy these four items, that the 2014-15 budget, as voted in 2014, is funded. So the budget that we're in right now is completely funded. That E&amp;D reaches the cap of 5% as allowed by law. That town meeting approves to fund the Silver Lake capital plan as we voted on 1-8-15. And that all expenses related to Pembroke litigation, legal fees or anything miscellaneous, are satisfied. So any difference in the funds would go back to the towns per their assessment.
Can we do it per assessment? Does it have to be certified and then go back in October, November or something?
However the law allows, though.
I have a comment. I've heard from, at least the Halifax Board of Selectmen, that they'd like to be part of this conversation. So I'm not sure I can support that at this time without having a conversation.
I understand, but I, if you read Mr. Selig's letter that he read us tonight, there's one part of it that says, "No communication, voting to spend this money, how do we use it, and what's to stop me to come back and spend the extra money?" I'm trying to assure, at least, and again, I'm speaking for myself, I'm asking for the committee to support this, that there's no intention on coming back next meeting and say, "Oh, let's spend another $500,000 and fix the add building." I don't think that any of us ever considered any of that, and I want to make it clear to the public that that's not, you know, there's been a lot of talking back and forth, and we haven't spoken and shared these things with each other, so maybe it's the time to do that. You know, the elephant in the room is the Pembroke litigation, you know?
I agree.
And I'd like, I learned some information today about where the funding source for the money came from, that I was on the way. And I don't know why, I guess we didn't really go look for it, but I'd like Mr. Tuckey to share the information he shared with me today on the source of the funds that we have in excess right now. And I can summarize if you wish, Mr. Tuckey, or you can dive in, but basically, I was missing one at FinCom meeting that we had with the three towns in Kingston at the senior center the other night. And I assumed that the funds that we had in reserve to pay in the event we lost that litigation were monies that came from Kingston, Halifax and Plington. And I was mistaken. And evidently, that funding source, it was not assessed to the towns, it did not come out directly. Basically, when we split as a region with Pembroke, Pembroke's share of E&amp;D fund at that time was $927,000. So essentially, that was already Pembroke's money. The court evidently left it in our hands, sequestered, unable to be used until the settlement was done. It didn't change hands, but it's really Pembroke's money. So the Pembroke additional funds that we received grad us up to an approximate total of $1.8 million. It was all money that was a settlement to the Silver Lake Regional School District to compensate the district for the losses that we had, which, and there's a laundry list, and I summarized. We had retirement issues we had to deal with, we had storage issues of vocational equipment, desks, chairs. Basically, every item that had any discussion on it was left at Silver Lake, sits in a big gray box in the back field, and has been costing us premium dollars to store this, as well as making our campus, I mean, I don't know how many remember these six or eight vehicles we had with all the windows broken out, that we moved six times in order to build the school. In addition, I was informed that based in December, the litigation bill of $111,000 was assessed against the region to settle that. That was our attorney fees, and that may not be altered.
Well, I was perhaps less than clear. We have spent $111,000 all in all. And that has been spent since 2008. So between 2008 and 2015, that totaled $110,594 on litigation.
So the funds that the Silver Lake School District caps, the mechanics, I guess, perhaps I'll defer that, of how, if nothing happens, when does this cash become available to be in excess?
Well, so what has happened is we have, excuse me, we have in this year, because this all settled in July, we know that we've, we have left about $1,800,000 has fallen into, has flowed into Silver Lake, and that was not part of the budget. And at the end of the year is the time when the state does our E&amp;D. If you're a town, it's when they do our free cash. So if everything else was perfect, we didn't have any other surpluses or any other deficits, at the end of the year, we would have this $1.8 million that would be on our balance sheet. And when the state, and so when the state at the end of next, at the end of this year, in October, when they do our E&amp;D certification, we get it about November. In fact, the town get a copy of it when we get it. They would say, importance with national law, Chapter 71, Section 16B and a half, anything above 5% of our operating and capital budget must be returned to the towns and through the assessment. And that's just what the law would say, and that's what would happen. Any questions?
Do we have to wait for E&amp;D to be served?
That's a wonderful question, and I don't really have an answer for you. This is a very unusual situation. I believe that if, that if the district and towns all had come to some form of agreement about what they would like to see happen, we could approach the Department of Revenue and say, "Gee, is there, is there something that can be done to speed up the process" if that's what the towns would like, if they look to have access to those funds sooner than later. I don't think the Department of Revenue is interested in getting involved in a dispute among the regional school district and its member towns, where the law is quite clearest in what happens, and it's just a question of timing.
Madam Chair, I know John's worked on this. I've been asking for October, for the Department of Revenue to give, somebody to give something in writing. I've been pleading for that. I'm not blaming it, it's just, that's not the way they work, and you've talked to two or three different people up there. I would like to do something. I would like for us to set up a subcommittee of the chair lady and the distinguished member from Plington, Maureen, to be a subcommittee to work with John to try to get us an answer from DOR, if you have to use Fred, so be it, and then be able to answer these questions. Because I'm not against the motion, I'm just confused by it as to how it can be implemented. So I suggest that subcommittee of the chair lady and Maureen to work with John to get an answer so we can come back and make sure what we do is correct.
I like to involve James, we're going to involve him as well. I just mentioned that Kingston, if we had the three towns represented at least...
I meant my emotions, Mr. Guinaboni.
So...
But you can't do it by Skype. I'm calling someone.
And I, as far as, I appreciate your committee comments, Mr. Crete, but I mean, we have at least one or two more budget events. If we would like to have the selectmen come and discuss it with us at one of our budget meetings, if we have time to post that, you know, we could do it then.
I would feel more comfortable, for myself, actually inviting the boards of selectmen as they requested to sit down.
At February meeting?
We could do it at the February meeting.
I think that would be better, then we can all share the numbers and have everything on the table and have some anticipation. I mean, my question is going to be, if there's a way, because they would have to wait till a year from July to get said funds, is there a possibility we could loan it to them between now? So Halifax can solve its deficit problem this year instead?
Joe?
I was just going to say, in spirit, I'd like to support Mrs. Springer's motion, but I'd like to make a motion that we do not vote on that, we table that motion to a different meeting, as we do have a motion on the table.
A motion to table, I'll second it, cannot be debated, vote on the table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Now we can listen to his motion.
You wanted to table my motion, didn't you?
No, I wanted to table her one.
Her was on the table.
Again, it's not debatable. We don't have, we're missing some members of the committee here.
Yes.
And we've lost some of our audience.
Absolutely.
By doing this, we're putting it on notice that we're going to do this at another time. But the spirit, the spirit of it, I think, is a good idea.
Okay, as I said, I was requested by, I'm sorry, by our chair of our board of selectmen and the chair of our finance committee, who I didn't realize had left, I was writing something up and she was up, and I just wanted to satisfy the request that they made.
Yeah, and I'm not against, I'm just...
I understand. I appreciate it.
So my motion's still on.
That is part of the problem, is that, you know, I don't know if our boards of selectmen are all on the same page. And I don't know if we're all on the same page and making any decisions right now.
I understand. You speak of Halifax, I speak of Palms.
And Madam Chair, just so, wait, secretary's doing a great job. It's a three-person committee. You got...
And thank you for volunteering, Mr. Crete. I appreciate it very much.
Well, it's just...
I know, it's the...
Okay, but did we second it and did we vote?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to create a new subcommittee for just the Pembroke settlement that would be made up of myself, Mr. Guinaboni and Mrs. Springer. Was there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All those, yes?
Discussion, I think we should wait for that vote till after we invite the selectmen, see if we come to a resolution for it. So we can work with the state and Mr....
Well, they might be able to come up with some information that will help the meeting on the 26th.
All right.
I don't want to exclude that possibility.
I'll support the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
That's good.
Thank you. Now, there's a question from the audience, yes?
Madam Chair, through you to Superintendent Tuckey, the, just as a clarification, wait, when you talk about excess E&amp;D being returned to the towns, doesn't it actually act as a funding source to determine your budget or something like that? Isn't that the way it's returned?
It is, the statute talks about it being returned through the settlement process. So if we had E&amp;D in, that we were returning in fiscal year 16, the next budget cycle, we could, we would be reducing your assessment in that year.
So it acts like a funding source?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if that's how you like to look at it, it certainly reduces the assessment that's available to have for Silver Lake.
So part of what this subcommittee maybe can do is see if there isn't a way that that can be done for February 14 and 15?
It was in the current year.
Yeah.
Sure. And I, and I think that goes, I think that goes to the question about where the law is very clear as to what happens, and I think that if we were to ask for a variance from it, I think that it would have to be a case of... from it, I think that it would have to be a case of the communities and the districts in agreement so that we're not asking the state to put themselves in a position to be arbitrary of what's, of what's fair, because this is in the end, what's fair and what do people want to see happen.
It's, it's actually just a matter of three days.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think this was settled on July 2nd.
I think it was the 17th.
I have no idea.
What?
When was it settled?
I don't, the date is settled.
Yeah, it was in July, I think it was in July.
Then we gotta check.
It was right before our meeting in July, so whatever.
We got, yeah, we've got to check that, but I think the settlement agreement is dated July, July 2nd.
Okay, I can't, I, and I don't remember. Okay.
Mr. Andrews?
Madam Chair, is the settlement money, if it's not in E and D, is the settlement money able to be used as a source of funds for FY 14, 15, or 15, 16?
That's some of the questions I have that I'd like to have answered before.
Okay, I just didn't know if the money had to go to the E and D process before you could.
We don't know.
Okay.
The law states that's what it's supposed to happen. What we can work out with DOR is a different story.
It, Madam, it, just to follow, it, it's an interesting thing, because this money was actually in E and D.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that, that balance.
Of course it was.
And it was certified.
No, actually, it wasn't.
Pembroke's, no, you said Pembroke.
It was not, it was not part of our E and D calculation, because it was fund balance designated for, E and D, much like free cash, needs to be unencumbered and in the form of cash.
But it was encumbered.
It was encumbered, so it didn't go into the calculation. If you looked at our balance sheet, you'd see a fund balance that was total fund balance that was greater than, and boy, for people who aren't accountants, I may as well be speaking swiftly, and I apologize. But if you look, but if you look at, but I know Mr. Henry understands, so if you look at our balance sheet, what you would see is a larger fund balance, and from that fund balance, you would take out funds that were designated for use, in this case, settlement with Pembroke, and end of the year encumbrances, that always happens. You get a phone bill, and you don't know how much it is, it encovers some money, you take out those encumbrances, and then what's left becomes your E and D. So it was part of the larger fund balance number, but not part of the E and D.
But what if it doesn't get spent? It just, just, the restriction is taken off?
It, well, and that's what has happened.
Yeah.
And that's the accounting treatment of it this year. The restriction is taken off, so it comes in as a, as a receipt and boost. It comes in and boosts fund balance. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I think one of the things we have to look at is that this thing is so unique that I don't think anybody up there knows what to do with it. And I think Mr. Tuckey mentioned, and that's why I pushed this subcommittee, maybe in order to get out of this particular situation, which they hope will never happen again anywhere, they, we could work it out amongst themselves, and they may just look the other way and let it go if everybody agrees. That's why, I, I appreciate the statement from Plumton, but it's so confusing, I want them on board so we don't get burnt down the road, either on your end or our end.
But I'm going to share, one of the concerns that I have around all of this money is, if we use it to reduce assessments, what does it do to the towns' minimum contributions, and where does that leave us going forward, and does that impact the towns in any way? That's one of the things that I'm very, very nervous about, because I don't know the implications of that in the long run.
Yeah, well, that's why I think it's good to do what we're doing and see where it happens in the 26th, we might have more information.
Yep, okay.
And we will extend the letter inviting the water selectmen to the 26th, noon, Thursday at five o'clock.
I would like to send an email to the towns, inviting them.
Towns, please.
And I want it to be copied, I want the whole board to be copied of that.
Mr. Tuckey, could you make that?
Aye. I can do that.
Perfect.
All right.
Can I just, one last question on this, this money?
Go ahead.
Some of it was insurance reimbursement. Do, do, do we have to pay the insurance company money out of this settlement, you know? Out of money that we're receiving, does the insurance company have, does the insurance company have any kind of dibs on any of the money?
We have paid all the premiums, we have all the, we have paid all the premiums.
So we paid it all, then we're being reimbursed for the, we've already paid.
Yep.
That's what, so the 13, 14 reimbursement of 331, and then the 15 reimbursement is the 157 bucks. So that's, that's the ongoing.
Yes.
So we're going to continue to get money from them to cover the 15.
For, well, teachers and other employees, all of them, yes, any staff, any staff that has been, that has been a member of Silver Lake prior to June 30, 2004.
We, we, my folks home.
Yeah, we killed.
Let's, let's move on.
You're looking for my documents.
I'm looking for them to your account.
Um, one, one final item, I'm not going to ask you to vote on anything, but I want you to start to think about this, and we'll talk about it next month, and that is the draft calendar for next year. Yeah? And this is the time to start to do it, and people do in fact try to make plans with their lives and when we're going to have professional development days and those sorts of things. Now, not every number, not every date on this is locked down. However, I think some of the big, the big gifts that people would like to know about is the first day of school, and our first day of school would be Saturday, it would be Wednesday.
I can see you paying attention.
I don't think you're paying attention. Would be, would be Wednesday, September 2nd. You know, this year, Labor Day was as early as it can be, next year, it's as late as it can be. So we would start the Wednesday before Labor Day, it happens to be the 2nd. I'm going to ask the committee to go back to what we normally do, and then just have one of our two professional development days during the year to be on Tuesday after Columbus Day weekend, in years when we, giving people a four-day weekend to plan for, in years when we have elections for which we expect a big turnout, two of our buildings are used as election, as election places, election polling stations, we try to separate the students from the traffic, we don't hold elect, we don't, so we take election Tuesday. Christmas vacation, the holiday break in December, I would expect to start on, on the 24th, which is a Thursday, and continue through the next week. In fact, it turns out that New Year's Day is in fact on Friday, so we would come back to school on the 4th. And then the 19th of that month, it would be a professional development day, it's teamed up with the Martin Luther King Weekend, it gives people a 40-weekend that they can plan This calendar does include Good Friday, which happens to be March 25th next year, so we jump into, we, we jump into March. Graduation would be June 4th, which is a Saturday after Memorial Day, and then we would have our last day of school on the 16th, which is a Thursday. Tentatively.
Snow days, next year.
That would, that would allow for 10 snow days, as a matter of fact. The highest number I have heard for snow days is, is 10. I'm told that we actually had 10 snow days many, many years ago. I don't remember it. So that's, that's the.
Please don't try and beat it.
So that's the broad outline, I got it, never mind. That's the broad outline of, of the calendar and the dates, so families can think about it. You'll also see in there some of the, some of the half-days that we have in our release days spaced around, and we have marking periods. So we'll talk about it and work it out next month, and I'm going to ask you for a vote.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you very much. There is no new business, old business, administration building.
No.
Continue it.
We don't have any new business, but what I understand, though, the other committees are still putting people together to assist in this role.
Okay, so I will continue this onto the March meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
We were anticipating, can I just say, it would be nice if the people that volunteer from the school individual committees made, preference would be to try to take somebody that was available during the day, so that we can do some research, nine, five versus good luck. I'd just like to put that out there.
I, I will try, but good luck.
Okay.
Okay, so.
No executive session?
No executive session.
Move to a chair.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
I told them, I have one.